Good evening, everyone. This is Monday, October 29th, meeting of the Committee of the Whole. We're here today to discuss one item on the agenda, which is a motion by Councilor Rotundo to discuss HYM and traffic mitigation. However, I requested a meeting for this purpose to go over any questions the City Council may have of HYM, as well as prepare for some of the upcoming months and things that may come before the council. So at this time, I'm going to open it up to the representatives from HYM to give a presentation, and then I'll follow that up with any questions from the councilors or anyone else that has any questions. Madam Chair, can you take a roll call of the committee?
Roll call of the Committee of the Whole. Councilor Guirassos.
Here.
Here. Councilor Keefe, absent. Councilor McKenna?
Here.
Here. Councilor Morabito?
Here.
Here. Councilor Novaselsky?
Here.
Here. Councilor Patch?
Here.
Here. Councilor Rizzo?
Here.
Here. Councilor Rotundo is absent. And Councilor Zambudo?
Here.
Here. And President Junino?
Here.
Here. Quorum is present.
Thank you, Council President. Again, my name's Tom O'Brien with the HYM Investment Group. We're going to present to you some slides that I think are going to show up on the TV back here if you want. I'm not exactly sure how the Revere TV folks are going to switch back and forth, but I'm going to try and rely on those if I could. Thank you again for giving us the opportunity to be involved with this project and to present it to you here tonight. We've been involved in the process of trying to move forward on a master plan with this project for probably two years, I think. We first had a handshake to purchase the site in the fall of 2016, and then acquired the site itself in May of 2017. As you can see, it's a very large site, as you know, 161 acres. I think you all are very, very familiar with it from all the different history that's come with the site and all the activity that's been around trying to redevelop it. We've been actively involved in trying to go through and introduce an idea behind how we might redevelop the site. But generally, let me just give you a quick sense of the schedule. As I said, we bought the site in May of 2017. We've been engaged in a public engagement process for at least those 18 months. I think we've done over 350 different meetings with different community groups, including certainly many of those meetings here in Revere. One of the things we've done specifically, and I know there are members of what are called the Development Advisory Group who are here today, but one of the things we've been specifically involved in is a very structured process with the city since last spring, since I think end of May, beginning of June of last year. And I believe that Bob O'Brien and other members of the city administration will present this, but there are members from the DAG who are here as well, I think, to talk about this. The idea behind the process was to structure and sort of professionalize the process of reviewing what we had proposed. And as we said, we've been engaged in structured meetings once every few weeks or so on the site from June until just last week or so. It's been, for me, I've been involved in this business for 25 years. It's been one of the best structured and most professional processes I've ever been involved in in almost any community. It's been really, really great, and we've gotten a lot of feedback. We've really appreciated all the work, the volunteer work that a variety of people have put into this. And there have been interested folks from school department former members to some of the councilors who are here today, to other members of the community who are community leaders as well. So it's been a terrific process to be part of. You know us, we're the HYM Investment Group. This is a slide that shows you the various professionals that are involved here. CBT is our master planner. STAS is our landscape architect. I think you've seen us present some of these things. And this is a list of some of the meetings that we've done, just a few of them really. But I think we have two slides worth of these meetings all the way across the board. So we've been engaged, as I say, in a very extensive community process. So as you know, our vision here is to create a mixed-use, walkable neighborhood. That's really the most important thing. We think that this site can be a great place for people to eat a meal, great place for jobs, great place for new companies to be located, a great place for people to live, great place for retail, all those things. So this slide shows you our basic principles. Again, a mixed-use, walkable neighborhood, but we also want it to be a place that has great parks. So we said from the beginning that 25% of the site would be dedicated to open space. And so 25%, which yields 40 acres across the whole site, will be dedicated to open space. In addition to that, we're focused on neighborhood retail, as I said. So retail for us is not big-box retail. We want the retail to be small restaurants, small stores, neighborhood-oriented retail. Then if we've set the table correctly, if we've made it a great place for people to live, great place for people to eat a meal, then we think we can make economic development happen. So we clearly mean for this to be a site in which there can be great office buildings, great companies located there, all kinds of opportunities for job creation on this site. It's a big enough site for that. It's a transit-oriented development site, certainly, as you can see in the middle slide. And it's also a site that we can focus on sustainability and resiliency as well. So the open space framework, we kind of start with this as a basic framework. I'm going to run through this fairly quickly, but generally, because it's one site, we can approach the planning of this right from the get-go and get the open space framework managed well right off the bat. So we'll focus on a central park in the beginning, in the middle of the site. We want that central park to have a variety of different types of character associated with it, can be active, can be a place where people can read a book. In addition to that, we see that there can be opportunities to take what we call the green fingers and extend the open space into other parts of the site so that other building sites or other building locations can share in the open space. And those green fingers can be used to help us manage the influx potentially of storm water on those occasions as well. We want there to be very active spaces, so there can be active linear parks that will connect around the entire open space system, which will give people an opportunity to make a loop. If you want to run for a mile and a half or do a walk for a mile and a half, you'll do a full loop on the site. There's chances for us to save some of the historic pieces on the site as well and introduce public art as well, which is really a great opportunity for us. The key thing, and a lot of this came out of our Department, our Development Advisory Group meeting, the key thing here is to make this site welcoming to all the members of the public. We want this to be a place, whether you live there or just want to shop there, we want this to be a place that you come and enjoy gathering at. The open space can be places where we hold festival marketplaces, there can be great chances for people to gather. We envision there being food truck festivals, there being, as we said, kind of festivals across the board that allow us to present a vibrant, active site that is very public. This gives you a sense of the kinds of civic plazas and civic buildings that we believe we can build on the site. Here's one that's right on, this is the, the building is kind of on the left here. This could be music, could be public gathering. And then on the right is the central park, as you think that through. The master plan vision. So here's our master plan vision for the site. This is the full site, so this is both the Boston portion and the Revere portion of the site. This gives you a sense of the block sizes, relatively small block sizes. We want it to be a pedestrian-friendly place. Again, the open space is central to what we're planning. This is just the Revere portion of the master plan as you look at it here. So just by Beauchamp Station is the Revere portion of it. This gives you a sense of the land use. This is something we've been presenting to you since over a year, I think. This land use plan really hasn't changed very much since we last met with you. You recall that when we sat with you back over the winter, we completed a rezoning process with you, which was completed in February. This basic land use plan, this basic master plan is the same as it ever was through that whole process. The key things to focus on here, particularly in the early phases, we want to build an innovation center. So we want to set the table for there to be commercial property on this site, and so we'll do an innovation center in our first phase. In addition to that, we want there to be a retail square and a retail walk that kind of complements the retail that exists already in Beauchamp Square. And we want to make sure that this kind of marries up with the existing retail in Beauchamp Square and really enhances the neighborhood as we move forward. This gives you a sense of the hierarchy of streets here. So this gives you a sense of exactly how we're trying to organize the streets. I would just point out a couple of things on this slide. We'll get some of this a little bit later, but we're going to invest a tremendous amount in the 1A corridor and specifically in the existing entrance to Suffolk Downs that is on Thomasello Drive, basically off of 1A, so that the main entrance that you think of today, where the Suffolk Downs sign is on 1A, that will become a fully signalized intersection, and it becomes a very active place. It'll become one of the main entrances and really the main entrance for the entire site as a signalized intersection. It will work then to allow people to make a left coming out of the site, allow people to make a left coming into the site if you're coming southbound. So we really think that this will handle the majority of the traffic as we go through. In addition to that, we'll go through the bike network. There's a tremendous amount, I think, almost seven miles of bike trails that we'll create throughout the site. So this is a slide that kind of shows you how the bike trails will work through the site. Every street will have a bike-related trail. In addition to that, the pedestrian network is very active. We want this to be a place that allows pedestrians to walk everywhere, very pedestrian-friendly site. These are those pedestrian loops that I described for you. So you can do a shorter loop, you can do a full two-and-a-half-mile run around the full exterior of the site, and a one-and-a-half-mile loop in the interior portion of the site. We've shown you these before, the senses that there can be a number of distinct neighborhoods. You can see that the Beauchamp neighborhood is the one closest to the Beauchamp Station, and we focus, again, on the character of that neighborhood as being a split between commercial, a 50-50 split between commercial and residential, which is, again, what we had presented previously to the council for the last year or so. So what are the mix of uses as we think this through? So again, as we think through the office pieces of this, the blue buildings here are office and lab-related uses. So this would be the largest single office complex that would be built in Revere, I think, in Revere's history. It's about 2.5 million square feet of office and lab in these blue buildings, including the renovation, I'm sorry, the innovation building. The office-lab, the nature of work has changed drastically, particularly in the last five years or so, in that office users and lab companies are much more interested in being places where the work can be collaborative among workers, to be on campuses where there's opportunities for people to step out and have lunch in an interesting place, or enjoy dinner, or enjoy a park. So the space is very different than it ever was. It's no longer the case that a financial services company needs to be only based in downtown Boston. They can be in a variety of different places like this, a campus setting that would offer opportunities for their workers to be in interesting spots to work. The first, as I said, is this innovation center, which is about 35,000 square feet, focused, again, at Beauchamp. This is right in Phase 1. This kind of helps us set the tone of what we're going to do right off the bat. We think of this as a great flexible space that can be also community space when it's not working as an innovation center. So we think of this as kind of our gateway as we go forward. Again, same proposal that we've talked about with you during the course of the year. This is a rendering that shows you Beauchamp Square as you look toward the T, so your back is kind of toward the interior portion of our site. That's the innovation center on the left there, a rendering of what that might look like on the left. These are kind of precedent images that give you a sense of what that center can look like. So these are images, many of which are taken from the Seaport District in Boston, from that innovation center that exists there today. The retail plan obviously is, again, extremely important to us. We want this retail to exist right at Beauchamp Square, right as soon as people approach from the T, and be able to walk that whole retail stretch along what we would call a Main Street back towards Suffolk Downs T Station. We call that other square towards Suffolk Downs T Station Belle Alle Square. It's a kind of a play on Belle Alle Marsh, and we think frankly that long-term, that Belle Alle Square name is a name that hopefully will stick. But that walk, that retail walk, is really important. It's a Main Street that we want to be successful. And obviously, we're retail-heavy in the early stages here at Beauchamp and in Revere. This is a really important piece for us, is to get this retail right. We want the retail, as we say, to be interesting. We've also been working, and we've pledged to the city, and a lot of this was discussed during the DAG process, that 10% of our retail we would make available to local retailers on a lower-cost basis so that we can have what we would call authentic retail or genuine retail that is locally based. That's a really important thing for us. This just gives you a sense of the kinds of retail, the kinds of festivals that we would think about. A lot of what we're thinking here is you need to kind of curate this a little bit with the kinds of professionals who would bring retail like this to the site, creating opportunities for there to be farmers' markets, opportunities for there, as I said earlier, food truck festivals, places where there might be some music, things like that, great gathering spots. We want this to be a place that is a really attractive place for people to gather, very public. We want everybody in the community to feel welcome here. This just gives you a sense of a rendering of what that Main Street District could feel like, the sense of what the streets will feel like, the sidewalks, again, very wide sidewalks, very pedestrian-friendly. This is something very interesting. This is the culmination of a lot of the work that we've done for all of our careers as we try and make this work. In addition to that, we'll do a hotel in the first phase, so this gives you a sense of where that hotel will be. The hotel is really important to us to get this right. Obviously, the hotel market today is very strong, and there's opportunities to finance hotels, but we don't want this hotel to be just a hotel that is associated, say, with the airport. We want this hotel to be special. So this gives you a sense of some precedent images of other hotels that are elsewhere in the greater Boston area. On the left is one of the hotels, newer hotels, in the Seaport District, right on the Fort Point Channel. On the left is a hotel that's located on D Street, right near the convention center in the Seaport. So we want the hotels to have great restaurants. There's got to be a great restaurant on the first floor of this hotel. Frankly, we'd like there to be a great restaurant and bar on the roof of this hotel. We think there'll be nice views of the water, and so let's take advantage of that. This hotel has to be really special right from the get-go, so it's a really important part of our plan. In addition to that, there are residential buildings, as we've talked. We have to set the table to make sure that people will live here as we go forward. And the residential is a key part of making this a place in which companies can be located, as we've talked a number of different times. This is a slide that shows you, on the darker orange slides are what we would call mixed-use residential buildings, where there's active retail on the first floor. The lighter yellow are residential buildings that are kind of off the beaten path of the retail, so those will have either no retail or less retail than the mixed-use pieces. This is a slide that shows you the residential unit mix. So remember that a significant portion of our residential units, we're dedicating to senior housing, so 10% of all units will be for senior housing, which is very important for us in terms of building community. We want to make sure that it's not just young people here, we want to make sure that there's senior housing available. We've also thought through that for-sale opportunities or condominiums will be a key part of what we'll offer. In addition, there have to be rental apartments as well, because that's the fundamental underpinning of the residential market as well. But we really want to focus on a variety of different types of units, a variety of different types of people who will live here. And particularly in the rentals, we'll do no three bedrooms throughout, which I think has been a concern of people on the council. We've done, again, a lot of work within the DAG process to go through this whole proposal. This just gives you a sense of the residential precedents that we've gone through. On the left in this slide, or two that we've built actually, just give you a sense of the quality and the level of which the amenity package that we put together. We want this residential to be very high-quality. We want it to be successful in the long term. We're long-term owners, as we've said to you a number of times. This is a 20-year project for us, so we're going to be doing this for a long time, and we want to get it right from the get-go by investing well in the beginnings of this project. This is a slide that kind of runs through our parking targets, so each of these buildings will have parking within the buildings. We've worked very hard not to overbuild the parking, but to, both with the DAG members and with city staff, to ensure that we have enough parking to be sure that the site will work. So from retail to residential to office, this is a slide that shows you the total number of parkers on site. I apologize, I'm not going to read the numbers because it's a little bit like an eye doctor's exam for me, because I can't quite see the numbers from here, but we'd be more than happy to go back through some of these pieces with you. These are locations in which the parking will be located, so we'll have on-street parking, particularly for the retail. As you know, we'll build out all the streets, and we are responsible for taking care of the streets and all those things, but we'll also want to have some on-street parking. We want this parking to be for retail. We don't want this parking to be certainly for commuters, so we'll be working very carefully to be sure that the parking that we create here will be, again, focused on retail. The next couple of slides, we're showing some community benefits. This is kind of hard for me to read because they show up a little smallish for me, but essentially, we've gone through tax revenue. I think in Revere, I'm going to look at my guys, I think it's 40...
Net benefits, net benefits of 30.
30 million. So the total tax benefits, I think, are like 41, 42 million. Net benefits, after going through a study, are about $30 million for Revere, which is obviously a very significant number compared to any other. I think that's the largest single property tax number, certainly in the history of Revere. We're very proud of that. We'll create all the parks and the open space network, as you can see on this slide. We'll do all the interior road network. We do all the infrastructure around water, sewer, all those different pieces. We'll do all that work. We spent a lot of time with the Department of Public Works and the staff there. We've spent a lot of time with the Mass Water Resources Authority to make sure that we understand exactly what we're getting into. Just these infrastructure pieces, together with the off-site infrastructure investments that we proposed, will tally up to $300 million. So what we're saying is we're going to spend $300 million on infrastructure, both on our site and off our site, to improve transportation and traffic and all those different pieces, and that's in our proposals, we've gone through it. This is a transit-oriented development site, as you know, and so we've worked carefully to make sure that, as a transit-oriented development site, we've oriented the site towards the two Blue Line stations and towards the potential for the buses as well that are here. We thought carefully by creating a bus shuttle loop on-site so that people who live a little bit further inland or inside the site, away from the Blue Line stations, that on bad weather days or cold days, we'll have a bus shuttle loop for them to encourage them to use the Blue Line stations there. We'll also create other shuttle connections, both to South Station and to North Station, to encourage people to use our shuttle connections and make those connections to other opportunities to connect to the T. This kind of gives you, this is a slide that shows you, we've done what I think is the most extensive transportation study of any developer in Massachusetts in recent memory, as far as I can tell. We actually did two studies on transportation. One study, which was done at the behest of the Mastod staff, was using the Mastod state model that seeks to model large regional projects. It was called the CTPS model. So that study, the results of that study are on the left. We found that study to be kind of overly car-centric and not really matching with what typical transportation engineers see for experience for transit-oriented sites like this. So we did a second study as well, to be sure that, we studied what the impacts could be on the Blue Line. So the way to think about these studies is, on the left, that's kind of the car-centric study, and improvements to the car or the highways that we propose manage that study. And on the right is kind of the study that we think is a little bit more accurate, that shows a little bit more Blue Line ridership. And so for that one, we focus in on, okay, what will the impacts be on the Blue Line? So that we're thinking carefully about the margins here of what the potential impacts could be across the board. I will say, just on the transportation piece, if I could, essentially by spending the $300 million, which includes about $50 million off-site, after we build the site out fully, this is, I'm giving you the conclusion of the book and the analysis, after we build the site out fully, we end up with a site that improves the level of service across the board on every intersection. Many intersections today are Level F. We improve those intersections to a C or D in every instance. Now, obviously, when I went to school, a C or D was not going to cut it in most instances, but in this kind of a scenario where you have F for most of these intersections, and you're improving them to a C or D, those are substantial improvements. And so we feel really good about where we are. We spent a ton of time with Mastod, with your staff here, with the staff in the city of Boston. Everything that we proposed, all the improvements that we proposed, have been worked through with all those folks all the way through. These slides kind of show Blue Line capacity, and what these show you is, for both the transportation studies that we did, the CTPS and the TOD study, we're under policy capacity in terms of the additional Blue Line ridership. So on this one, if you can see the tips of the Blue Line bar charts, those are bar graphs, those are, the orange pieces are our people that we're adding as a result of our development at full buildout in the year 2038. So as you can see, the green line is the line that shows what the so-called policy capacity is of the Blue Line, and we're under the policy capacity in the morning commute hour, and we're under the policy capacity in the afternoon commute hour coming back. In addition to that, by the way, by introducing offices and office buildings to the site, you can see on the left-hand side of this one, we're getting opposite commuters for the first time coming in the Blue Line. As you know, the Blue Line's kind of a one-way train that runs into the city of Boston in the morning with commuters, and runs back out of the city of Boston in the afternoon with commuters because of the lack of office space out here. When we build office space on our site, we fill those trains with people going each way, which is better business, obviously, for the T, and allows the T to not run empty trains back and forth. We also studied the existing platforms to be sure that increased ridership can be managed by the platforms, and so this is a slide that kind of shows you that through. I'd refer everybody to the book that we filed. It's a very extensive effort. I think just the summary page is like 175 pages or so, the summary section, I'm sorry, is about 175 pages. So it's very, very, very comprehensive. We studied 53 intersections across the area. This is a slide that shows you where those intersections are and everything that we did. In addition to that, we walked through a road safety audit on a number of other intersections. These are intersections in which there have been accidents that have caused injuries, so we went through a road safety audit to come up with suggestions of how we could increase safety. We then went through a variety of opportunities to stress traffic mitigation and where we would improve intersections along the way. I would just point out, I'm joined by my partner Doug Mans, but also John Kennedy, who's here from VHB, in case people have any more detailed questions about our proposal. We did go through at least two very detailed presentations on this with the Development Advisory Group as well, but we're happy to go through in more detail whatever the council would like for us today. This is a slide that just shows you Route 1A. I'm just going to kind of cut to the bottom line on this. We'll essentially take Route 1A, which is two lanes in each direction, and make it three lanes in each direction, change the intersections at Boardman Street, but most importantly, change, as I said, the entrance and exit for us on our site. This is probably about a $15 million piece of the $50 million that we'll spend off-site, so it's a very significant investment in our site and the 1A connection that we'll make to our site directly from our site in the current Suffolk Downs entrance and exit. This just shows you, these are the list of intersections in which we proposed mitigation. Again, everything that we proposed, we did in conjunction with both your city staff, as well as the city of Boston's city staff, and both District 4 and District 6 of Mastod, as well as the MBTA. So we've gone through extensive staff-related effort to make sure that we've gotten everybody's sort of basic approval for what we filed. This just shows you a slide, again, to emphasize the investment that we're making at the main entrance and exit from our site. We would expect that the majority of the traffic will be handled off of our site, off of Thomasello Road, because, again, we'll invest a tremendous amount of money in 1A, tremendous amount of money in that intersection, and fully signalize that intersection for the first time, which it is not today, as people know. In fact, even today, when I was coming out here in the midst of traffic, there was one guy who was trying to make a U-turn, make a left in the middle of that traffic coming, he was going north. Another guy was trying to come out of the Suffolk Downs site and make a left across the traffic, so you folks see it every day. We've seen it certainly for the two years that we've been on it. And so correcting that and making that intersection work is a key part of our investment. Just a little bit on environmental and resiliency. We've spent a tremendous amount of time. We take it as a great opportunity and frankly, a responsibility to make sure that we make this site resilient over time, and we'll use the park system. We'll raise the site in certain areas where we'll build buildings and roads, and we'll keep the site low in certain areas where we build the park in order to manage the occasional storm water that will come our way. So this just gives you a sense, this is our everyday condition at full buildout in 2038. This is a condition that anticipates the 100-year storm event, so this is the amount of water that will flow onto our site. We manage it responsibly. We'll create a stormwater outflow system, which the site does not have, has never had, and we will be able to manage that stormwater responsibly as the storm event subsides. So just to give you an example, this is an outdoor music facility that we've proposed just outside of our Phase 1 piece, right, part of our Revere section, but this also becomes a place where we can manage stormwater. So this will collect and hold literally hundreds of thousands of gallons of water in the event of a storm, and then allow that to flow out. This just gives you a sense of where the water flows in. Certainly, the DPW team knows this issue well. We've worked very closely with the members of the DAG to talk about this issue. We've talked about exactly what we'll think about in terms of our onsite improvements, or what we'll do, I'm sorry, on our onsite improvements, but we've also talked about ways that we could perhaps build a berm and think about protecting the areas of Beauchamp that today are subject to frequent flooding. So this slide kind of gives you a sense of that. We're hoping that we'll make connections from the East Boston Greenway through a bike trail that might come all the way out to where we are. I know this is kind of a hard one to see, but if you look in the lower right-hand corner, kind of near the parking lot of the school that's there, the Beauchamp School that's there, that's, one of the ideas that we've kind of put forward is, a very simple fix simple fix of a berm would allow us to protect that, that part of Beaumont, and, and as we say, kind of be a very simple and straightforward fix for that piece of it. Phasing, just a little bit on, on this, I think, this just gives you a sense of, there are at least four phases that we proposed in, in Revere. These would be memorialized in, in the special permit that we filed with you. The first phase is a, a piece that, you know, as we said, would include the Innovation Center and a hotel and retail. These are the other phases, including the Boston side of the, of the, the project as well. Sorry, just to, to give you a sense of, again, it's four phases kind of across the entire site, all the way through. I know I moved at a fast clip because I was trying not to use too much time. I'm happy to take questions or whatever you'd like to do, Madam President, next.
Thank you so much. So that gives us about 15 minutes for questions and answers. We do have an appointment subcommittee starting a quarter of, so I'm just gonna start at the end and work our way down. So if any councilors have anything, we'll just start with Council Grosso, and we'll just go right down. I'm not gonna call on anyone, just.
Madam President, I heard the presentation previously in, in full agreement with everything you've said, because based on the fact that, dealing with Mr. O'Brien, and he's also given private introductions to the property and himself, so I don't need any more information, it's already been furnished. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council McKenna.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. I have one question, Tom. Some of the residents down in Washburn Ave are concerned about when Suffolk Downs is developed, that, that street would be used as a delivery for trucks, and I just want to clarify that with you.
No, Counselor, it would not. So all of our, all access to the site for any kind of construction-related activity or any of those sorts of things will all be on our side, probably off of Thomasello, off of 1A, directly onto, you know, onto our site. There will be no, we don't have any connection across to Washburn Ave, so there's, there's no way for us to do that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Council Marbina.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. O'Brien, thanks again for the, I can't even count how many presentations I sat through.
I'm sorry if I'm boring you guys.
I really don't have any questions. I just have to say, you've always been upfront with me with every aspect of the project and been willing to answer any one of my questions, and you don't hesitate at all, so, and that's, I couldn't ask for anything more in a developer, so thank you.
Thank you.
Council Novoselsky.
Thank you, Madam President. Tom, what can I say? It's, I've been there, every meeting except for one, all the DAG meetings, and every time I've gone, there's been a great presentation between you and Doug and John, when he was there in traffic, and everybody knows that, you know, I'm into the traffic phase of it, and, you know, I, I'm into other things too, but the traffic is very important to me, especially for the folks in my neighborhood coming out of North Shore Road and Thomasello Road. And it's quite expansive. Now, there were some numbers when we were talking casino days, $50 million worth of traffic mitigation, which are...
Fifty.
...appropriate number.
We'll do 50 offsite, and, and, you know, our total onsite is probably another 250. So our, our total number for infrastructure is about $300 million, which is, again, it gets built out over time. It's a daunting number for us, but, you know, we, we went into this knowing, we're not asking for anybody's sympathy, we went into this knowing it would be a big expensive project, but $50 million will be our offsite number, which is a big number.
Okay, excellent. And entertainment on the site, movie theaters, I'm just asking, bowling, a theater-type venue, is that included in any of these?
Yeah, I'm a terrible bowler, but we definitely, we, we would, we're open to entertainment. We definitely, I mean, the next phase for us, after we've gone through this community engagement process and kind of thought, you know, through what the city would like, and, you know, and we'd like to get additional feedback from you on that kind of entertainment. So I think music, movies, bowling, athletics, you know, all those sorts of things, we, we definitely want to have it be a very active site for a wide range of people, you know, all age groups, so.
Right, and, and finally, just the last comment, you know, I want to thank you for your, your thinking out of the box, because, you know, Council McKenna and I both have issues that are adjacent to the project, and I want to thank you for being open to helping us to cure some of these long-time problems. So, we're looking forward to it. What happens in 20 years, you know, if I'm still around, I'll be 93.
I'll be 75. We can still go to the Begelburn together.
You know what?
I said, don't tell any more.
Well, hey, I'm proud of it, you know, it's, all I know is, you know, thank you. I want to thank everybody involved that's been involved with it, your, your team, your, your, your other quarterback, Doug, Doug is the pitcher on the mound.
Yeah.
And, you know, we have the Red Sox that won last night, world champs, we're all happy about that, wearing my tie. Tomorrow night, we go see the Celtics to move on, so they...
Dino's the West Walker, Dino's the West Walker, he's like the shortened-out, you know.
But I don't want to talk about the Yankee guy in your team.
Only one, only one.
So, thank you very much. I wish you luck, I wish we, all of us luck, on what's, what's coming up.
Thank you, Counselor, and also, Council McKenna, I mean, I think you two have sort of been our home councilors and really helped and great advisors to us right from the very beginning, we appreciate that. You know, the one, the one thing I would add on the, the traffic piece, Counselor, is, as we talked in the DAG, our hope is that, as we move this project forward, we can join shoulders with you to help implement a number of regional projects that we've all thought about for a long time. This corridor, both the Blue Line corridor, as well as the 1A corridor, has not been invested in appropriately, we think, by the state, I mean, just to, to say it clearly. And I think, you know, the opportunity is there, as we start to redevelop this site and take a site in which there's not much in the way of tax revenue, not much in the way of, you know, contribution, but we're gonna bring activity to the site, and we want to work with you to address some of those larger regional, you know, challenges, so, that'd be great.
Council McKenna.
Thank you very much. I just want to, again, thank you for listening to me, and I know the people are very happy about the new bus stop that's in, that goes from Beaumont Station to, into Stop and Shop. So thank you very much for listening to me and making that happen. Dino, thank you.
Well, we're gonna be together for a long time, and our intention is to be good neighbors, that's for sure, so, thank you.
Thank you, councilors. On this side, let him go over here. Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I got to say that, same as my fellow councilors have, have said, that you, I've had several meetings with you over the period of time, the last being this past Wednesday, and every once in a while, a crazy rumor will come up, like you, we had a little laugh over the last one. But I just, I have no questions, you, you're always there if we can pick up the phone, or, you know, we have our little coffee now and then, and I just wish you luck. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor.
Thank you. Council Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. Tom, I'm very glad to hear, as I, we had coffee the other day, and we touched on it, the possibility of connecting the Blue Line up with the commuter line, perhaps at Wonderland in that area, and I think that's something that really has to happen, particularly if yourself and whoever develops Wonderland is going to be reaching out for employees that are talented and that can fill the long-term positions at those sites, and also at the Neco site. The question I, I just want to make clear in my mind, you know, you talk about the Innovation Center and the retail, at, at what point will, do you anticipate, according to your, your plans now, everything going on track, the hotel down there?
First phase. So, so if I could just, on the Wonderland connection, so as, as we discussed, Counselor, and you, you know, you raised this with us, and so we appreciate you making sure that this, that was on our screen. You know, we, we see that as a really simple connection that can be made between the commuter rail as it flies right by, and the Wonderland Blue Line stop. We've included it on our list of, of projects that, you know, we, we'd like to push the Commonwealth to think about, and we've also included it specifically on our agenda of items that we've brought up already with the Secretary of Transportation. So, as recently as just a week or two ago, that was, you know, one of the items that we, we've brought up with her. She's interested in it and believes that's kind of one of a group of, you know, not huge, not, not big costs, they're relatively simple projects that can make connections across the system. So it kind of plays right into what her strategic, you know, thinking is on that. So we'll keep pushing on it, we'd love to work with you on that one.
Certainly, much less costly than takings down on 1A.
Absolutely, absolutely. Way, way, much, much more intelligent with the public purse, you know, I agree with you on that. On the, on the hotel, we want to build the hotel in the first phase, so, so those, those pieces, we'll, we're gonna, our first phase is about 1.4 million square feet, so it's, you know, we, we, it'll be one of the largest projects, you know, in, in the history of Revere, to be honest with you, because we're trying to create a sense of place right from the get-go. We'll build, you know, that, the, the full public plaza that comes with that, the Innovation Center, the hotel, as I said, we want the hotel to be something special, so we're not just gonna settle for a quick fix that is an ordinary hotel, we want it to be a special hotel with great retail, great restaurants associated with it. It's right at the front door, so we want it to be very successful. We hope it's gonna be an attractive place, not just for people who are staying there, but for people who might want to go enjoy dinner there, or go up and have a drink on the, on the rooftop bar, that's, we want it to be very special, and that'll be first phase.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Brien. You've been very informative, and I look forward to seeing this going forward as a very successful project.
Thanks, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council, Councilor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Tom, I can, I can tell that you've probably had over 300 meetings, the way you were rattling all this stuff off, slide after slide. Obviously, you've immersed yourself in this project, and there's a lot of good that I've heard come from it, and I'd also like to take this time to thank the Development Advisory Group for their hard work. I know I get, from Bob O'Brien, I get updated before each meeting, and all of the materials are sent to every councilor, so certainly, as one of the city councilors here, I want to thank you for that, and, you know, but, but there are, but there are a lot of people, as you can imagine, that are very concerned what's gonna go on down there. I know we had talked about taking, and I know working with VHB in years prior on traffic studies, you know, we have a lot of Fs that are going to As, but there's a lot of people out there who think that Suffolk Downs, right now, as it is, is an A, and they think it might go to an F. So, you know, it's, it really is up to, up to us, as a city council, to make sure that despite the tremendous reputation that you and your company has, that we protect the people of this community. And that's one thing that I've said right from the beginning, so I think you know that, we've met, we've met several times, I met with Dino several times, you know, there are concerns. Council Novoselsky had mentioned the $50 million in traffic upgrades, and that is outside of the site, which is where, quite honestly, I'm most concerned about right now. The work that's inside has to be done to accommodate whatever development is there. So, as far as the outside work, where our own residents travel day-to-day, this $50 million of improvements, it's a little concerning to me, because in 2013, there were $50 million of improvements. Now we're talking about 2019, and we're still at a number of $50 million. So I don't know if there are less outside-the-site traffic improvements going on, or if those dollar amounts haven't changed. I really haven't got that deep into the traffic study, nor would I be anywhere near qualified as your own traffic consultants to, to figure that out. But, but that's just one thing that just jumps out to me. The other thing that concerns me, we haven't heard a word about it, and maybe you have an idea, is the notion of Amazon coming to the site. They have not, they said by the, you know, end of the summer, they would have a decision. Clearly, that hasn't happened, and in all honesty, I haven't read or seen anything that would indicate that there's a, a decision coming soon, it kind of fell off the face of the earth. I don't know if you have any more inside information, but that could potentially be 50,000 people, you know, 24 hours a day, but, you know, 15,000 a shift, or whatever it's gonna be, should it come there, or maybe more at certain times, you know, maybe lower in the third shift or something along those lines, but that, that obviously would add to the density of that site, if that is still something that might go forward. So, 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 so that, outside of the number of apartment units, that's still kind of staggering me in all honesty. I mean, as I look at Assembly Row, which is 45 acres, they've got 1,000 residential units. We have, I don't, I'm, I'm not exactly sure, I think 40-some-odd acres in Revere, and we're looking at closer to 3,000 residential units. So, that number definitely concerns me, and while people may say it doesn't impact our school system, it doesn't impact traffic, it doesn't impact flooding, it doesn't impact stress on, on municipal services, I feel as though that you really, I think it's, I think it's foolhardy to think that, you know, I think, you know, as we look at some projects, Tom, that have, you know, and nowhere near the scope of what we're talking about over here, but Overlook Ridge, I mean, I've already mentioned that, no commercial development up there, all residential. Parcel H, they promised us a hotel five, six, seven years ago, no hotel as of yet. They keep saying it's in the planning, it's in the planning, it's in the permitting, and even should it come, even should that come, it's still years and years later. While we have instead, at Parcel H, of a hotel, 305 more apartment units going up there, and, and, you know, and in all honesty, I didn't even know that there were 305 more apartment units going there. I had to find out what, what it was, because I saw all the development going on down there. So, you know, and of course, the Shaw's project across the street, that there's no inhabitants there right now, there's a lot to be concerned about from the perspective of a city council, and so when we start talking about, and I said this at the beginning, there's gonna be something built at Suffolk Downs, and I, trust me, I don't want to be, I don't want to be an obstacle to that, but I want to protect the city. And I think the way we protect the ci, you know, I, one part of the presentation that I saw, that I saw our city clerk had forwarded us over the presentation prior, I didn't see the slide up there, maybe I just missed it, but Phase 1, and I'm not sure how long Phase 1 goes on for, 82% of Phase 1 is residential. And, again, that is just very concerning to me, because we're gonna be, you know, pulling or pushing tons of people into our community, you know, if you have 28 units, you're talking how many people, 5,000 more people? And then you factor in the Boston side, there's only so much access and egress, you know, based on the numbers that I was looking at, where Suffolk Downs alone would be in the top 120 largest cities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So it is a major, major project that's gonna have impacts, and I just want to be sure that the impacts that were protected in an agreement that's signed and agreed to by both, by both HYM and the city, and that, you know, the commercial component of this project, you know, the, you know, the Phase 1, the 82% of Phase 1 being residential was a little, knocked me back a little, I mean, I would have liked to have seen that more, like a 50-50 split, you know, to be honest with you.
We're about five minutes over, and we still have two councilors left.
Okay, those are my concerns, Tom, so I'll, I'll just, I'll just throw them out.
Can I give you a couple of quick answers? So, first of all, the, the square footage in Revere does not change with or without Amazon, so it's the same proposal, remember, 50% is gonna be for commercial. We did this when we did the rezoning with you guys, the phase is still, the, the first phase is still the same with the Innovation Center. Remember, as I've said, the key thing is, we have to set the table first by making it a place where people will live. On the Amazon thing, we, you know, we did invest quite a bit in going after Amazon, as we, as I reported to you, they, they came and did a visit with us in the spring of, of this year. I've had some email traffic back and forth a little bit with them. They've told the public, frankly, that they'll make a decision by the end of this year. There's a lot of kind of back and forth, people, just this morning in the Globe, they reported that the chief executive officer of, of Amazon had dinner in Cambridge, and they took a picture of him, they even listed what he had for dinner on the, in the Globe, if you can believe it. I don't know what all that means, we, you know, we're hopeful, but we haven't heard from them, so we'll, we'll keep trying to track them. But our proposal for Revere, with or without Amazon, is the same. Like, and I, just one more thing on, on the, the $50 million of offsite traffic mitigation. We're not a casino, as you know, right? So in terms of the casino levels of traffic, I can't speak to what that was, I can't speak to the size of it, I can't speak to the ability of a casino to generate revenue to pay for those sorts of things. We are developers who've been working at this, you know, this trade for 25 years, we can do the $50 million, we put forward what we think are really responsible, you know, really good fixes, we think, in a number of different areas, including 1A, Bell Circle, different places. We'd be more than happy to come and sit and go through the details of that with you, I'm happy to do that, but we, we believe we've been very responsible in what we put forward, and we can do it.
Okay, thank you very much, Tom. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Tom, thank you for coming once again. My basic premise in this whole process, but to be quite honest with you, has to be transparency. The nuances of what's going to happen there is going to take place over time, it's going to be a process of give and take and so forth, but one of the things that I feel is the utmost importance, and you've done a great job at it, is providing the public the information. My biggest concern is, right now, there's probably maybe 100 people in here, but we have just about 60,000 people in the city that really don't have a, a clear idea of what's going to take place. But mark my words, and I'm sure these councilors and other people in the audience can attest to it, that in six months to a year, once you start doing your construction per se, someone's going to complain that there wasn't enough information given, that people were not apprised. That's my only issue, and it's not you, it's the process, and so I want to try and get you before the camera as much as possible, because the neighborhood meetings are great, but they're neighborhood meetings. Getting you before the camera gets you before the people, and I know they're videotaping that, but they tend to watch the Revere council more so than, than that, not that I'm Nielsen or anything like that. The other issue, which I feel is vitally important...
And I'd be happy to do more of that, Counselor, if you'd like, whatever, whatever you'd like to do.
Well, I'd like to get a consensus from, you know, my colleagues, of course, and I don't want to impose upon you, because I will, and...
But you know, our basic principle is, we're willing to meet with almost anybody, you know, anywhere, so we're...
And, you know, to let the... And, you know, to let the, the public know that, I wouldn't feel comfortable with you if I didn't feel that you were genuine in that, and you're one of the few developers that I can clearly say that, and I'm a skeptic. So, you wouldn't say, right, Tony? But, but that said, it does not change my wanting to get you in front of the people as much as possible and as frequently as possible, but that, the issue I feel is, the $50 million that Danny was talking about is not in comparison to what was in 2013 or what have you, and I remember Chip Tuttle and other people talking about this, I remember distinctly, that there will be more traffic with your product than with a casino. That's quite frankly, a true statement.
I'm not sure, I, I don't, I just don't know, I've never worked on a casino ever.
I'm going by the numbers that they produced, I'm going by the numbers that the state produced in their study regarding the traffic.
I just don't know if I'd call that a fact, that's the only thing, Counselor.
Well, they're facts, we'll say. So with, with that said, being that could be true, it tells me that we need to do something more than just the $50 million, and I don't believe that you should be paying for the sins of decades of neglect in the region, and I'd like to have the council, the mayor, and I'm sure you're probably already working on that, but if you're willing to give $50 million for this process, and you need to do that because it's your project, I get that, we need to do something at, at our level to get the state to partner up or at least participate, whether it be one-to-one, whether it be 50%, whatever it is, because this is the time when you make a dramatic impact. This is the time when the state stands up and, and changes these regional issues, because if we don't, then we're going to lose that effort, and more importantly, we're going to lose the ability to get that money. So that's one of the things that I want to bring to bear. I'm going to cut my statement short, because I know the council president has other people to tend to, Tony, and in fairness to him, I will acquiesce, and I truly appreciate you coming up here.
Thanks, Counselor.
And I want you to know that, you know, anytime you get a little thing from the mayor or anybody else about me wanting you to come up here, it's solely for the process of transparency.
Happy to do it, happy to do it.
Thank you.
We'll do that, and I'd be happy to join with you and the city, you know, to advocate for the state to do more, we're happy to do that. It's, okay, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a lot of questions, obviously, you know, my colleague talked about transparency. I don't know a, a development company that's more transparent than, than your group. I obviously did my homework, as I always do up here, before you got here, and your reputation precedes you, and, and I've been saying, and I sound like a cheerleader, I don't like to do that, however, I've been saying how lucky the city of Revere is to have you to develop this site, because this site could be a nightmare with the wrong developer, and so I'm very comfortable, and when I'm not, obviously you'll know about it, and I, because we've had developers that promised stuff and didn't deliver, but again, your reputation is not someone who does that, and we don't expect you to change here. Too many phones. I apologize. I shut the other phone off, it took me about an hour to get it shut off, for some reason it wouldn't let me shut it off. Anyways, to, to get to the bottom line, my colleague talked about infrastructure, and obviously, there's Mass Works grants out there, we just got a two, was it 2.8 million dollar Mass Works grant related to the Shaw site or the area there, to 3.6? All right, to, to correct a lot of old infrastructure problems, so I'm sure that you and our economic development team is going to search for any grants that might be available. Shame on us if we're not doing that. But again, I, we're about to start a council meeting, I thank you for your presentation, we've seen, we've seen it a lot, and as my colleague said, you, you run it off like it's nothing, but it, you know, for people out there to see what's really going on there, because there's all kinds of stories, and I think recently, there were some crazy rumors, and there's going to be rumors all the time, so, you know, it is, it's good for all of us if, if you can come periodically on the TV, so that there's a record of it, and people can go to Revere TV and click on it on YouTube when they want to get some information, so I, and I know you're not trying to hide any information, and we're looking forward to a great project, and I'm hoping I'm alive to the end of it, who knows?
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
And I would just say, on those rumors, if rumors come up, if it, as we've said a number of times in all of our meetings, if you hear something that doesn't sound like what we've been saying, please call, and we'd be happy to address it, so, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, thank you, and if I may briefly, I want to start by thanking my colleague, Council Ganaso, as we have completely plowed over his subcommittee meeting that was supposed to be 15 minutes ago, but we will start that in a moment. I want to thank my colleagues for keeping their comments minimum, I know that this is a huge project, I know that we've all had the opportunity to meet with the developers on a one-on-one basis, and, you know, we're very lucky to be working with a group that is so engaged in our community, and as well as willing to take our questions and our concerns and work with us as a, a real team effort, so I want to thank the mayor's office and their work, and this council for their due diligence. I know that the ward councilors, the neighboring councilors, like Councilors McKenna and Novoselsky, I'm sure have more questions, I know myself, and Councilor Morbido, and Councilor Rizzo, and the other at-large councilors have more questions, but I appreciate everyone kind of taking the time to just get the main points across. There will be another meeting, and I believe it's next week. Madam Clark, is it the 6th?
The 5th.
The 5th, sorry. So November 5th will be the public hearing for the proposal, so that'll be coming across next week. I encourage any councilors to reach out to HYM directly for any other questions, comments, concerns, the public can reach out to your councilors, and we can relay any information or get any answers to any questions that you may have. So, thank you all for your time. At this time, I'm going to have a, this concludes the meeting for the Committee of the Whole, we're going to take a 1:30 second recess, so Council Ganaso can do a subcommittee meeting. Thank you.